The second comes to order, we are in order. Starting with, I think Danny has a introduction to make.
Yes, we hired a new assistant for the facility and grounds supervisor, sex and transport. Les Dibick, Les, is that right?
Yes.
Les comes to us from Vermont, he's retired, he's got lives in the guards of change. He lives right down the road here, Manchester Road. And he's a retiree of Vermont National Guard and the state legislature. He was a state officer.
Yes, I was the chief of police.
And he's a former MP too, so don't harp on it. And I just want to introduce the last two folks.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Good to have you on board, you're well, you're needed.
I know Gary's happy.
Okay, first order of business, policy for the extension closer to the transport station. Danny?
This week, thanks.
That was a discussion topic from last meeting. The wording change was an emergency time plan. I think that you held off on voting on it until the change was made. But that's why it's a whole business.
And we had a plan closer.
Yes. How come they couldn't dump into one of the dumpsters there or whatever?
I asked all those questions.
You know, this has happened before.
Once.
And they dumped it on the ground. And once they got the compact to go on, they scooped it up. You had people, some ticked off, and your phone was probably ringing here today.
No, just fear of you. But you know, and I talked to Kenny about Kenny dumping it on the ground. The problem that he had was a concern that it was freezing, but I mean, I, so I hear you.
Well, I mean, you got-
We're going to, we're going to work on how we reduce that probably in the future.
I mean, you could put it in with the bulky ways, I would think, because it's going the same place.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Do what?
Put it with the bulky ways, it's going the same way.
It's going the same way.
Call them for another dumpster, and just put it down there and dump it in, but-
Well, I'll let, I'll let, that's what it's always been doing.
Right, I mean, it's, but the problem is, is you've got-
Oh, please.
People that are businesses out there that are haulers, and now they've got the trucks loaded right up and can't do a thing. And there's trash all over the roads because people had it outside the road and, you know, crows like it pretty well.
Open tomorrow.
I know, but that, and nobody knew it, that's the worst part about it.
No, it was just hard to get-
I know.
What time did it close?
Nine.
Oh, wow.
They had a fire call there first, the fire alarm went off.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we need to vote on this. Everybody's ready, I take it? Do I have a motion?
So be it.
Motion, a second?
Second.
Move the second to accept this as our unplanned closure for the transport station. Any discussions? All those in favor? All ready? School choice league, that came up last meeting also.
This came up the last meeting, there were some questions about looking into the organization and all that. I did some online research, that's pretty much what I could do. It seemed that to be an organization that was nonpartisan, interested in making the public aware of different alternatives for education in various communities throughout the state and country. So, that's what I found, I forwarded you some information on that for your interest, so you could review it. So, their request is, is you're able to have the town do a proclamation if you wish. You can put that together if you wish.
So, the intent, if we pass this, is to send this proclamation, right?
We would develop our proclamation based on this.
Why is it, if you don't mind?
Bernie?
Why is it important that we do this?
It's, it was brought to the board, Michael brought it to the board, and it was talked about at the last meeting. It's up to you, you folks to decide, it's not an issue that, I mean, I don't see a problem, but, I mean, it's-
It doesn't do anything to change the way things are today, it does nothing to do that.
Yeah.
It tries to bring the, to make the parents and other people aware that there is school choice to some extent.
Alternative, huh?
Alternative, there are alternative ways, yes. So, I'll move that we go ahead and do a proclamation.
I'll second.
We have a second, is there any more discussion on this?
Can I, I don't know when you're proposing this. Is this an appropriate kind?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, I'm just, I wanted to throw it out, I didn't know if any of you had looked at the information. So, it's number one, it's a dot com, it's not a dot org, so it'd be nonpartisan, but it's not nonprofit. When you do make this proclamation, they send you a little gift pack of paraphernalia advertisements. So, my question, so essentially you would be, I want to know who would be taking that information and that material and endorsing school choice? And I would like to know why you're choosing to, you know, who's going to be doing it on the select board, and why would they choose to do that? And the other thing is, it's some effort to be made for school choice, but I feel like the select board is between a hard and a rock place, you know, a hard place with-
Rock and a hard place.
Thank you, a rock and a hard place, a rock and big boulder, supporting the school budget. So, it seems a little contrary that you're supporting school choi, put any effort to be supporting school choice. So, I just, I'm curious about who's planning on taking the material and going with it.
I understand what you're saying, school choice.
Yep.
But that's, that's not, this is not what this is intended, as I read the documentation. It's intended to make people aware that there's all kinds of education opportunities out there for kids, that people should be aware of who may not be.
But how do they do that?
No, they don't, well, it was through the proclamation that we signed, we let people, through that proclamation, let people aware. They also offer a kit, and if you want to promote it, you can promote it, all right? That's, that's what they offer. It's not that you have to promote it or believe that. So, the effort is to get as many, from their perspective, is to get as many municipalities on board with the idea of educating the public. And that's what they're trying to do, they're trying to make people aware. So, now, I know that there's opposition to school choice in this, in the country, so I get that, but that's not what I'm reading into this.
So, it's not municipalities, it's chambers of commercees that it taps, chambers of commercees whose job is to promote economic growth. I mean, I can see if school choice was really popular and they had some great programs, and we are on our way to snow pond. I can see why you would want to spend some energy. And I'm just wondering who's going to be spending their energy towards this?
My doubt if anybody is going to expend any energy to do this, we will do the proclamation if the board votes to do it. And that's probably as far as it's going to go. I just don't see it going anywhere. But I don't think necessarily saying that you're for school choice is a bad thing. There are all kinds of ways to educate kids, homeschool, there are charter schools, if you ever get night in schools, there'll be another one.
Online.
Online, big time.
Yes, sir.
Also, I just lost it, but-
Snow pond.
No, not snow pond, but Hinkley, there's a fantastic opportunity for kids. So, you know, there's things that are out there that I don't think the select board is promoting anything. We're just basically saying, hey, people, you should be aware. Anybody that watches TV knows that there are options, but a lot of people don't know.
So, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Can you tell me, out of the five of you, which one of you spent more than five minutes on website looking at it?
I just, I spent whatever time they sent me for information, reading it over.
From Danny?
Yeah.
I think all of us probably read it.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's fine, that's fine, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted to make sure there was proof.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing that all was in favor of a proclamation? Three, those against? One, two. Okay, three to two, that's good to me. Sales contract for the, we're in new business, sales contract for the Old Town Alliance.
Yeah, the contract with Yale was over in the Lakeside. Ran out on December thirty first.
Lake Point.
Lake Point, as I said, Lake Side. And the question is, do you want to continue that contract? I haven't talked to Yale in pursuit, do you want to, or do you want to do something else? I know that six months prior, you went to Yale prior to that for someone else, but did you want to see if someone else wanted to take on the-
I don't have a problem with seeing if someone else wants to-
It doesn't make any difference, I'm just raising the issue that they had in mind.
I don't have a problem with seeing if somebody else wants to take it.
Whatever works. Do we want to talk about lowering the price of that thing?
Not right now.
No.
I'd rather, my advice is to switch it to a different realtor, keep it at that price, let them work with it, give us their-
That'd be the third realtor.
The third?
It would be the third coming up if we switch it.
Yeah, this would be the third one, yeah, yeah. Well, I just, I know some stories of people that have had difficult houses to sell, and they had it listed with one realtor or another, and they listed with another realtor, and they, then they sold it. So, I mean, sometimes people have the right key to sell it, and sometimes they don't. I think we just need to find somebody with the right key to do it, I think, you know?
Give me a motion, please.
I'll make that motion, we-
Will we switch realtors?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second, any more discussion on this?
I think we should wait, if we get a, if we get a new realtor.
Yeah.
See what their advice is on the price.
Well, I think we're, to be honest with you, I think we're back to the, what we was told that that building would go for at the beginning. But we took the higher one because that was the best interest for the town, and we're back to square one, basically.
We really didn't believe we were selling for that, but we thought maybe we'd lock more.
But for the benefit of the town, that's what we do, we had to go with the higher one, I mean, for as I was concerned.
Case for move the second, we go for another realtor, I take it, we want Danny to find that realtor.
Did you go out with an RFP last night?
I don't think so. No.
We just asked.
I mean, I, I don't care if she's going to do it, but let's get moving on it, get it?
Yep, yep. So-
Put a fire under it.
All those in favor of another realtor, same price, carries. Route twenty seven catch basin inserts.
I put in a chain of emails, actually Charlie Gator was going to be here, he's supposed to be here a quarter of, I did think it'd be moved this quick. I put in your packet, the email exchange between him and the state and the group there. The issue here is, I understand, and you may have talked about this before, but the issue here is, we're going to put seven new catch basins in. And in those catch basins, they could put filters in, and my understanding of that was the agreement that was put filters in. And those filters would last for ten years, and if during the maintenance that the state is supposed to do for them, if they get damaged, the state would replace them. But if after ten years or some period of time when they wear out, then they would have to be replaced. And the liability for that place, that would fall on someone. My understanding is the Belgrade Lakes Association, and then perhaps down the road, another organization. But the Belgrade Lakes Association has agreed that you pay for the replacement of these, which is in the name of a thousand dollars for the seven, as I understand. And that's why I wanted Charlie here, and he said he'd be here to pull it up. I should have, he made it a little bit earlier. But nonetheless, the issue here then is a letter of commitment on part of town, and they agree with the town, the group. So that the state can then put this into that city-state MOU that they're going to send to us.
Is this the basin down by the bridge?
The seven basins.
Seven catch basins, in the whole project.
Still don't know.
There's seven catch basins in the whole project, I think.
Well, seven of them?
Yeah.
Why don't we just table this till Charlie gets here? Let's move on to the next.
Yeah.
If it's BLA that's party, but I have Lynn Matson, Charlie doesn't, Charlie's an associate.
So, Charlie was working on this whole thing, my understanding, he carried the message for that, but-
Let's, let's see what he's got to say.
Give me a motion table.
I'll make a motion to table this.
Move the second, all those in favor? It's tabled. And we got a policy update for streetlights, we need streetlights.
This is policy-
Somebody keeps backing it in the ditch.
Basically, has nothing to do with down, down, the building, in the sense that the street lighting they're talking about in that agreement. This has to do with the streetlights, but the large streetlights on poles are for safety purposes, et cetera. And it's the policy of how someone would request the town.
Yes.
So, Gary would request one, and Winzley would do it, I would, on thirty five, for odd reason. But he might do that. But this is the process by which he can do that, and then the town will back up.
So, this is what's in place now.
This is in place, and I don't see any need to change that.
Yeah. Two thousand and ten, last summer.
For a type of- It's a two type of account.
We can, type of changes, if you just provide it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, any more discussion on this? Is I going to get the form and start just showing it out?
Well, we usually deny them, but that's-
That's right. I was going to say that.
Mostly denied.
I don't think, we have denied a couple, I don't think we've approved them, that I know of.
But not since I've been around.
No.
As long as there really isn't any serious issue, then we would.
The one issue that you might want me to work on, and I've been thinking about it, is a lot of towns are moving to LED, street lighting. Now, there's a cost to that, you know, but there is a savings on LED lighting. So, I have been looking at the possibility of bringing that to you at some point in time, so it's what you know.
The streetlight cost.
CMB, but why?
CMB, we pay for them on a monthly fee, it's a streetlight rate, it's actually a rate at PUC that's for streetlights.
You can pull this out of the sheet.
I got it. Okay.
As a personnel.
All those in favor?
Uh, move the second, we accept this, all those in favor? It is accepted with corrections, yes.
Right on time.
Almost, there he is. Route twenty seven catch basin.
Yes.
Go for it, Danny.
I explained a little bit the approach, and it refers to the fact that, as you relayed to me, the BLA incurred the expenses of replacing it, I'm sure they need replaced at ten years after, or whatever. Anything before that, if it was damaged, would be replaced by the-
Main DOT.
Main DOT. And then you need a letter of the, between, of agreement between the board and the organization to, you know, the-
And the board and MDOT, too.
And MDOT, no, those three organizations, we need to cover letters that can be placed into the state, the city-state agreement that we're going to-
And that'll keep the, the filters in the design of the Route twenty seven project. Right now, they're in the design, and they just want some assurance that the nonprofits are planning to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And mine's saying, you said BLA, so the issue is, how can Charlie speak for the BLA if the heating's not associated?
Right, and Lynn Matson, who's the president, would be the person signing it, but I'm just being helpful, I try to move the conversation.
Michael?
Charlie Lam said this at one time, it would be, set up to be a three-way split on expenses, the BLA, town, and DOT, do you know if that's still the case? When the BLA found out that it's projected to be about a thousand bucks a year, they decided just to cover the whole thing. It's complete. Yeah. And that wouldn't really kick in till after the warranties wear out, which is in about ten years.
It's a thousand dollars a year after that?
Um, well, there's-
Every so often when it needs to be replaced.
I think there were eight in the system, I don't know the exact number.
I found seven.
Seven, so, you know, and they start wearing out after about ten years, the warranty, so that's kind of what we figured for planning purposes, about a thousand bucks a year.
A year or?
A year.
Ten?
No, 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 after about ten years, it would start kicking in that thousand bucks a year.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. Which makes it a, you know, affordable for BLA, or, yeah.
Yeah, Howard?
What do they filter?
Primarily sediment. And sediment often carries phosphorus into the lake, so that's, that's the primary objective. There are more expensive filters that either are available now or could be available in the future, that might pick up other contaminants. But right now, it's primarily sediment, basically dirt.
And how frequently do they have to be serviced?
Uh, annually.
And does the state going to do that?
They've said they will do it.
Is that in writing?
We want to get it in writing.
Well, that's a part of the letter that you would-
Yeah, I think that's their share of keeping this agreement, if, if someone's going to be spending money on, on, what, and that's really important. It's a good question, because I, I've heard that they've put in similar filters in, I think it was Winthrop, and they weren't maintained, and they just yanked them out, which therefore, they don't do anything. So, you know-
Or put up the works and then call flooding.
Another good point, yeah, which, yeah, ice on the road. So, it would be, you know, we want it in writing, you know, for our share, coming up with the money.
Zach?
Yeah, a question on the same subject. When the state put the collective system down in the middle of twenty seven, through Belgrade Lakes buildings, I don't know, twenty-five years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago. It seems to me there was an outfall point to the string, somewhere around Bill Pulsar's house.
It is.
Back to the-
Yeah.
And there was a filter associated with that. Does that all play any part in the new system here?
With the-
There was a question then about who maintains it, does the, does the town maintain it, or does the state maintain it? And I never knew how that was ever resolved.
I don't know about the history of that, I am familiar with the pipe, and it's, what, the way it's, my understanding is, is they're basically building into the current, more or less, the current design, and putting in these catch basins, more of them than there are now in the system, to do a better job of filtering the water, you know? That said, that's why we want it in writing, because I'm not aware of what the terms were the last time around.
See, Bill Pulsar always said, before that system was put in, there was a delta of road sand that formed out in the stream.
Okay, right by his house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was put in at that time. And it seems to me if there's going to be a, an understanding about filtration, that should be included in the discussion.
That particular location?
Would seem to me.
Oh, no, right, no, 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 I think-
Part of the system.
I think the whole thing is being upgraded, essentially, with more of these catch basins and with better filters.
Yeah.
So, but I'll, I'll ask, you know, the DOT engineer about that in particular.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any more, what do we want to do, gentlemen?
I, may I make just one other comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, my sense is, is that MDOT would like to get this and the acceptance of the sidewalks and the lights all wrapped up by February, and-
Which one's city state?
And so, I have a conversation going with the state engineer on this, who's working on the project, so we may get a letter for you to consider as early as later this month. But I, I think the idea is that we wanted to have this conversation tonight, and then be able to wrap up any editing of the agreement over the next four weeks or so.
So, the agreement actually is, the first ten years, it's under warranty, and after that, the BLA is going to take care of it, as far as you know.
Yes, yes.
And, and the MDOT would do the routine maintenance, or?
Yeah.
But the town has to accept the arrangement, as I understand it.
I'd just make a motion that we approve, move forward with this, it's just-
Yeah. Any more discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, let's move forward with the letter.
Okay.
Sounds right to me.
So, I'll keep, I'll keep Danny posted, thank you.
As soon as I get that one.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for having me, yeah.
On this warrant.
I know.
Okay, warrants, I understand there's questions on the warrants?
Well, it's warrant number one fifty five, and I don't know what the final number is.
Here, have that, hold it to her.
I got it right here, look, I can, it's like thirty-two thousand.
You want to read that?
Yep, it's warrant number one fifty five, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five oh and six cents. It's the same as what I had.
Okay, questions, please?
I got a few. I got my paper in my pocket. Yeah, why do you always look at me and step right in? I'm starting page five, six. Oh, gee, um, sixteen, five sixty-two. I guess it is, a cube truck.
Yeah, there's two of them on there.
The cube truck. I'm not sure, I think, you know, there are, I think they're like dollies, I'm not positive, but I think they're like dollies that they move around those boxes and stuff with, you know, those-
Is this for the library?
No, this is for those-
Solid waste.
Solid waste, yeah, waste, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's right here, and that's all, that's all it says, he said six fifty-two?
It's probably a hand truck, okay.
It's, it's probably a, a big square.
Yeah, it's, I think it's the manager, the boxes.
Yes.
What's a portable backup, is it another radio, is that what they, it says portable backup, same-
What is the check number?
Same thing.
What was that?
Sixteen, five sixty-two, stay right on that, because we're going to be on that for a minute.
It says general government, man, pad man.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what, sixty-one?
It looks like the cube truck is what you put your cardboard in.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, it's just a cube truck, you don't want to go on.
Oh, I see where all the-
It's all under the same check, I'd say.
Yeah, there's a series of checks here.
Yeah.
So, you're asking what the-
Portable backup. It looks like it's for a general government, it looks like it's for you guys.
Truck cube. Seagate backup plus portable, okay, I believe that's for their computers, Seagate here.
Okay.
It's a backup for the drive up there.
Oh, and then you got salt and pepper shakers, two times here.
Salt and pepper shaker.
Yeah, I'm serious.
Same price, six ninety.
Yeah, I mean-
General government.
Salt and pepper shaker.
Same dates on everything, right?
Yeah, then we got to go back a few pages.
Just that might be a double, that's all, it might be.
Warrant, new warrant. Fire government.
I mean, I'd say they bought salt and pepper shakers, that's what I'm guessing, but-
Yeah, basically.
It looks like maybe two different departments, kind of.
Well, so the general government.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, food, salt and pepper shakers. Yes, and I don't know-
Was it just one bill?
I got one bill, the quantity of one, and that's it.
Well, there's two on there.
Yeah, it's two on the warrant.
The warrant, that to adjust it. Well, it appears that there was a double.
I would just check it out with Melanie, make sure we're not cutting off a nose by the face here. You ready for the next one?
Of course.
All right, this is under Staples' credit, it's sixteen, five fifty-eight. Looks like they bought a digital camera, three-year protection, and a camera case, for the library?
I think it was for the library, yeah.
Well, it says library, but-
He said, he, did you work?
I ordered that.
It's for the library.
Okay, I guess I just wondered why they, what's that?
What answers, what do they need?
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay, library, I'll ask the question and get back to you more.
Again, usually if they make them purchase, they usually check with us.
I mean, it wasn't a real expensive deal, but it's-
It's liquid, it's liquid.
Right, that's all I had, I think that's enough.
More questions, gentlemen? Mr. Barrett?
Sixteen, five, six, four. It looks like the five one, the light bar, I wonder what part of that is going over the engine? Can you answer that?
What's it called?
Light bar.
Light bar.
I got an idea, probably went on the new brush drop that they just got going.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
By a guess.
And the other one, which is, I don't spend a lot of time answering this, but why do we have a bill for eleven cents from Fairpoint Communications?
I'll check in, in about two minutes when I check in, or come to you more.
Thirteen cents.
We should, we should check, I'll find out why.
Well, this just shows that we're checking this, you know, that's, that's what was supposed to be doing.
Very commendable, Rick.
And then we, we also were billed thirteen cents by Central Main Power for the Wings Mill Dam.
See, I missed those two.
Must have been the end of the year or something.
I look for big, I look for big ticket items.
It just seems odd, that's all, that, you know, tossed them more than posted, so then they did that.
Well, I get, I've gotten checks for anything.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense to you, Rick? Last bill to me was four cents. Really, four cents.
You gotta, you gotta make more calls, I think, or you need to make more calls or watch more TV.
That's not even basic service. Okay, any more questions on the warrants, gentlemen?
No.
I would, I have a motion to accept it. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Moves the second we accept the warrant with changes. All those in favor? And it's accepted.
Thank you.
Town managers report.
Yes, the, these are updates. The marijuana warrant expired. The question is how do you want to extend that or how do you deal with that decision?
I guess we should just extend it until the state, state looks like they're in the final stages of doing whatever they're going to do.
Yep, that makes sense. Make a motion, benefit. Then move that we extend it till the state makes a decision. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Who would second it? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Three, four to oppose.
Okay, the next issue is just to bring up the date on the issues with beach lot three. There's, as you know, there's an ongoing legal battle between Mr. Fuller and Beverly over the the beach lot three issue, who owns that, what access they have with that. As part of his, as part of his efforts, he sent me a letter and I moved it off to Gary Fuller to check out, basically requesting that we inspect the number of violations that he believes has occurred down there during the construction of the house and post-construction of the house, and he wants us to look into it. Gary said that he had been down there with DEP, Colton Clark, and that the, many of the conceived violations here, or reported violations, both he and Colton Clark from DEP indicated were not significant, but he's going to check it out again because there's documentation here that shows some violations, so he's going to check it out. You'll probably be hearing more about that. There's a, I also, we got an appeal from Dr. Drummond and Woodson. An attorney, the attorneys that are representing Mr. Irvin and Ms. Rosavi, on an issue of slope districts on their property. And last, in September of two thousand and sixteen, this issue went to the planning board, was sent to the Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals got a legal opinion from Maine Municipal's attorney, that essentially said it's, it's a modification to the ordinance, and it should go back to the planning board for an ordinance amendment, and then put through the vote of the town. This particular appeal sets forth a case where that is not so, and it just needs to go to the Board of Appeals to have them ascertain the correct boundary for the slope district in the Sherman zoning ordinance. I then took it to our attorney to get a legal opinion, so that we could use that, because it's legal advice from Maine Municipal, it's not an opinion. So, our attorney is looking at that, will be writing a legal opinion. He believes that the MMA attorney was correct, based on court rulings that have occurred on this very issue in the past, when the mats included in the Sherman zoning ordinance, which ours is, then it becomes an amendment for the Sherman zoning ordinance. So, I wanted to update you on that, so if you hear more.
Does that have to do with the changes that were being checked into and recommended? There was some law, a group of laws up there that the slope was wrong or something?
This is the slope issue, and, and this is a single law. So, maybe the whole-
Wasn't a part of that same struck, because they was going to redo that.
They may be redoing it, it may be an amendment, but this is, they want this to go to the appeals board. They're saying that the appeals board has the right, not the amendments through the planning board. The appeals board has the right, and they cite a particular portion of the Sherman zoning ordinance, but our, like I said, both MMA attorney's legal advice and the legal opinion, which will be forthcoming for our attorney, essentially says court rulings in the past have basically said it has to be an amendment. So, maybe part of that, I don't know. But I have sent this on to, and I've talked to Peter Russell about it, and I've sent this on to the appeal board, who will be having a meeting to address this particular issue, once we get the legal advice or the legal opinion.
Correct?
No, I'm fine.
And I know this board, and certainly I am interested in issues relevant to our poor property ordinance in Maine. And I sent you some information surrounding a major legislative initiative that will be going forward this year. It's from MMA, I sent you the articles talking about it. It's a, it's called, they call it the senior property tax bill, but it's an effort to, if you, if you remember going back a few years, Governor Page was asked to intercede on parts of some populars, I think it was in the Liberty or somewhere east of that. And they want, the people were going to lose their property, he's an older couple, and he couldn't stop that action, based on the existing law. So, these are changes to the existing law that would enable towns to better address that and provide better protections to senior citizens. There, there are a number of approaches to this. I put the summary of LV sixteen twenty-nine on the table for people that are interested, but there's that approach, and then there's a couple other approaches that may be in the offering. The question is, because I know that you guys have been interested in this in the past, whether or not you would like me to testify in favor of or opposed to, or in any case before the legislature. Or would you like to testify?
No, I think, I think it would be very beneficial if the town was represented, at least my opinion, it'd be, we foreclosed, did we foreclose on eight pieces this year?
There's eight properties, seven people, and we're not quite sure about one who may be in bankruptcy.
Well, it's in bankruptcy, we can't. The thing is, I just think that the last few years since of my serving on the board, things have gotten all worse, and it's just, I'm all in favor of whatever the state can do to put us in a situation where,
It's easier for them.
Well, when they come in here, if they don't qualify, we can't give them, you know, an abatement, because they don't qualify.
Yes. So, what I'll, what I'm prepared to do, if you agree-
I'm within, yes.
If you agree, I'll prepare testimony and provide it to you prior to presenting it. Generally, testimony is three minutes long. So, the testimony in support, I may throw a couple things in here that I believe should be covered, that's what you did.
No, I think that's great, I mean, I think anything we can do to help.
Want a motion on it? Go ahead.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, I just, I want to ask you.
When he gets, when he gets it done, maybe we ought to, or present it.
Then I can testify that you've, you know.
If you're going to go down and say, this is what the town, Belgrade, we are.
Yeah. Let's wait till he gets it written up or whatever, and then we'll-
I'll create a testimony and provide it.
And we'll tear it apart.
Yeah, then we'll tear it apart.
That's quite all right. I don't know if you noticed, but the town office sign is moved. Got a higher cost than we invoiced this board on the last meeting. I think Kevin may know well of it, with his. But-
Was that the total, the, in the amount of the warrant, was that the total?
Yes, that's what we're, we pay.
Good. And just for curiosity, the, when the building was built, was the sign supposed to be there, or was it, it just, this was an afterthought?
Quite frankly, I don't know where it was supposed to be. My understanding was it was placed there based on some discussions, but when I checked the DOT, when I checked the DOT, they said, no, you can have it next to the road. In fact, I got it in writing.
The DOT told us you had to go where we-
Right.
See, the thing, we've had, we've had some issues with welcome to Belgrade signs, they made us move them back off the road, and that's when we were setting this thing up, they come in and said, well, you can, you've got to be this by that.
Thirty, thirty feet or sixty feet or something.
We fed it right to the limit, right where we could.
Yeah, and in any case, I, I asked them, why wasn't it available, able to be placed within the, what the regulations required? They said, well, of course you can do that. We recommended a foot and a half, two foot further, just because if there's a survey problem, but, yeah. And if you look at all the signs, including Hammond's sign, it's about in that thirty-six, forty-foot area. The one problem that you probably also noticed is that the snowbank is higher.
Yeah.
But that's manageable. I've asked Gary to move that, he gives you the answer.
Yeah. I just, I've had some people ask me, well, why wasn't it put there in the first place, and how much, how much do we-
They would love to have put it there in the first place.
How much did we pay to move it, and why did we do it, and I'm just, you know, trying to-
I've had those questions, and I'd like to answer them.
Those are all good questions.
Sure they are, yeah.
Well, it's unfortunate. It just makes, a lot of things that happen make it look like the select board just don't give a shit and don't check things out. We usually are pretty thorough. There's all kinds of things that happen.
Well, you have to rely on what people tell you.
Yeah, that's fine.
But it's moved. The new contactors installed? Whether it's operating now or not, I don't know, but it is installed. Security cameras for this building will be installed tomorrow. Transfer station closure. I just wanted to update you a little bit. I got a call about eight thirty-nine o'clock, I think eight thirty-four. He talked about what to do, he was having, the hopper was coming up. I asked questions, Senator, he would ask if there were issues with all of that. So, Kenny's input made, I followed up Gary, we talked about it. And I decided, well, Gary said, what do you recommend? And I said, well, we might be able to stay open for recycling materials and all of that, and garbage, but I'll leave that up to Kenny, because, you know, he might be confusing people. He said, well, that'd be a bit confusing, because people then want to drop off everything, you know, who wouldn't? So, but given some input that you provided, I will make sure it doesn't happen in the future. The problem was water in the filters, plug the holes, and it wasn't getting through. And the battery was bad, so they need to, so Walt couldn't make it there until today. And that's why, because we would have done something else if he could have made it.
I do have a couple questions. Was it plugged in? That, that engine does have a engine heater on it.
No, it doesn't. In fact, that's what Walter's current, I should have brought that up too, because we talked about that, and, and they're looking at what is the best type of block heater to put into it to allow for-
Well, I was told by a prior person that it had a block heater in it, and it has one for the hydraulics too.
Well, if it, if it does, then Walter is looking for something that, I assume Walter knows what he's doing.
I'm sure he does. I'm just, that was brought to my attention.
Yeah, I'll, I'll raise the issue to them, so.
In fact, I could probably give the guy's name and phone number that told me this.
We would just ask them to check it. I mean, I would assume.
I can't imagine it doesn't have one on it, because-
Well, that's what was surprising to me, too.
Yeah, it's got to have one on it. Like, it's been too many years. The other thing, you can always put a space heater down.
The only, one other time that we had to shut down the station because of that, and that was the last year I was here, in two thousand and ten, I think, yes. The only, so. Okay, let me go on here. Foreclosures, I'm going to bring the list of foreclosures with some recommended actions for you at the next board meeting. And I, I will be providing you the policy of the foreclosures, you probably know it anyhow, but we'll provide that in the next board packet. I, I think we should address these in some way. You can tell me where you want to store the sale or not. I plan, prior to that meeting, I'm talking to every property owner, let them know what would be the process and what they could do. And I'm also looking for alternatives. Perhaps, I, I think there's an alternative that's sometimes used that allows the town to sell back the property to be owned or re-satellite, you know, but anyhow, we'll be looking into all of that. I don't know if this is more foreclosures than you guys have asked or not. I know it's more than I've seen.
We've had six before.
Yeah, six, I was going to say, was a big number.
Eight's the biggest block.
Well, there's a couple people that I'm, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I don't understand why they, but they were noticing. They provided all the notices.
I know, when I, when I first came on board, we used to do some payment things, and we found out that was illegal, so we couldn't do it.
There is a, there is a, one, I know you can't do payments over time, but one of the, the suggestions I'm going to make is one that the state would like to do for themselves, you know, the alternatives to the senior tax proposals that they got coming forward. That is, for the state, basically sign a letter of agreement with the property owner to say that we'll pay you your taxes to the town, but when the property is transferred, then all of the payments from the towns go back to the state. Well, I'd suggested that the town, essentially, do the same thing. To have, you know, the agreement between the towns. So, that's one of the modifications I'll probably suggest.
Come up with a plan.
Yeah.
That works good, yeah.
Okay. Did anyone hear about the prepayment of the taxes that people were trying to do here? Our offices were flooded Thursday and Friday last week.
Yeah, because of the new tax.
People tried to get the property tax payments, even after I told them that. My understanding of the IRS ruling was essentially you had to have, the taxes had to be committed for you to be able to take the tax back. They still were, oh, why don't you do this, or, you know, New York does this, so-and-so does this. I said, well, we're not New York, and we're not so-and-so. And we'll take payments if you come here personally, or provide the check in time.
That's because it was on the media. I mean, it was all with the media, well, get your taxes paid before the end of the year.
But anyhow, we got eighty-three thousand dollars plus in tax prepayments, most of that due to this issue.
Well, the thing, the thing with that too, Danny, is we can gladly take the money, but it's their problem dealing with their taxes.
Oh, absolutely. We clearly made, we made that clear, that, you know, we have the ability to prepay, but you want any of that money back, sorry, and, and we also don't have to pay interest.
Yeah, they have to be assessed taxes, not estimated.
Right. So, it's, it's committed, the tax committed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I had handed each of you a list of the deaths that occurred over the past year. I highlighted, I think, five or six of those. If, I know that, I think there's one that everyone will agree on, but there was a few others here. If you can give me, you know, your suggestions on that, or if you want me to just go forward with the ones that I highlighted, I'll the individuals prior to actually doing something and see if they in fact want that to happen, and then we can do it. It's up to you.
I'd forgotten, I'd forgotten about one, Ken Wortman, I think that really, I think, I mean, I saw it on the list, and I go, that didn't even come to my mind, but that's a guy that's done a lot for this town, for the kids, most of us in this room.
What do you do? What do you, do you make, in the town meeting, you say something, or what do you do?
Well, there's, if you look in the annual report.
Yeah, okay.
There's a, there's, there's a dedication of the town report to someone.
Yeah.
Or something.
Then there are memorials.
So, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's the memorial dedication that we do, generally toward people that have had, you know, part of the, you know, different issues. It's all kinds of issues, but we don't deny anyone that requests them, I don't think, but we have it. But by the same token, you don't do them for anyone.
Can I ask if there's a name on there in particular? Am I allowed to ask if there's a name on there in particular? Am I allowed to do that? Is Dan Pratt on there? Did you see one of your highlights?
Dan Pratt is, I haven't got my list here, so I can't remember.
Oh, okay.
But Dan Pratt, I, I think I, I just highlighted him. I also have something I was going to give his wife, I just haven't had a chance.
Okay.
It was the legislative senator.
Okay.
I think the vice president would have Denny go ahead and come up with lists and take a look at it.
I'll send you a list of the recommendations, and then whether or not I'll contact the people and see whether people want to buy that or not.
Yes, I was going to, I forgot to say that.
Okay, very good.
Is it?
No. We have not finalized the warrant for the town meeting.
Oh, I, I, yeah.
So, we need to, I know that the town meeting warrant can't be finalized until the harbor trust gets their numbers in, and that won't happen till probably sometime before the tenth. Now, we can set a special meeting up to approve all of the warrant articles, to debate them and then approve them. Sometime shortly after that, and then provide for a week's notice once we get the final warrant for the public hearing. And the public hearing only has to occur on those referendums. So, it's your pleasure and when you want, the-
I think there are over seven warrant articles that we got enacted.
And the tenth is a Wednesday, so if you want, as soon as, I don't know, Howard, when do you think, once you get those numbers in?
I was going to ask you tonight if, they said the fifth now.
Well, they said as early as the fifth.
Right. As soon as you get those to me, I will, I will process the, the exact numbers for the warrant within a day.
Okay, so within a day, so if we don't get them until the 10th, and I don't think that it'll be that long, but I don't know. We can set a special meeting to finalize the warrant for the 11th or the 12th or even the 15th.
11th is up.
Yeah, and then, and then as soon as that's done, we can have the, we could have the, you know, it'd be too late to, then we could have another public hearing, we posted it for seven days and then that would be maybe on the 23rd.
I, I would suggest we set it for the 9th, if it comes in on, that's next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday.
And then the 10th, I think they'll probably have it to us before, they know what we want, we need.
They were saying the 5th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but they said no later than the 10th, that's why I'm anxious.
You comfortable with that?
So set the, set the special meeting for the night, and if we have to delay it, delay it.
I had the, the.
Are you comfortable?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, then, we could have the public hearing, if you set it for the 9th and it comes in, we could have the public hearing on the warrant articles.
Sixteenth, well, there's a regular meeting on the 16th.
There is a special, yeah, but we have to provide for seven days with the warrant.
Yeah, we could still do a regular meeting with a public hearing, same.
We could, we could set it for the 16th. I mean, it's recommended, like, have seven days' notice for public hearing, but you, you can cut it short.
That's just at seven.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it'll be available, I've got a doctor's appointment in Portland, I'm not sure it'll be there.
If you don't stop the supper, you'll make it.
Well, 10th is fine.
10th?
10th is up.
Whatever.
Well, what time is that? The special meeting would probably occur at 6, right?
Yeah, 6, good.
Yeah.
Ricky?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, hell depends, if it's snowing, there's no one above me.
Are we on the 9th or 10th now?
On the 10th.
10th, yeah, that's fine.
10th at 6.
Yeah.
Look, Budget Committee, they should be here, so.
Budget Committee? At 6, yeah, the 10th at 6, yeah.
We'll have it put out as well.
Okay, and then, and then public hearing.
You can have it the 16th.
Well, that's cutting it real short, that's six days.
Or the 17th, you got a special meeting or whatever. Townman?
If we get the information on the 5th, do you wanna do it on the 8th or 9th?
Well, the 9th is out.
Okay, 9th is out.
Yeah.
Why couldn't we do the public hearing on the 16th or a regular board meeting?
Well, they've already, they said they would do that. Generally, they recommend seven days' public notice, right, generally, but it's not an absolute requirement, you need to.
Can't believe that one day's gonna make all that.
I'm not, I'm just saying that's what they recommend.
Or you could go the next week and go the 23rd or something like that, whatever.
I mean, we're pushing our, I'm trying to get the annual report too, although.
What's our printed line? What's our printed deadline?
Well, we haven't got exactly, I'd like to, sometime in the first week of February, have it prepared.
16th?
Yeah.
16th, I'm in.
Yeah.
16th? 16th, 6th, 3rd, or 6th?
Let's go, let's go a little long earlier so we can get it done and get out of here.
5?
Uh, I can't go 5.
Let's do a 6 o'clock, same time. And then we'll have the regular meeting after the public hearing.
Yes.
And I'm sure everybody will stay and listen to that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Be ready for that.
I'm sure we'll have a crowd in here, you just can't believe it.
So are we not gonna do the final warrant until the 16th or are we?
No, we're gonna do it on the 10th.
We're gonna do the final warrant?
And the public hearing will be in the 16th, both at 6 o'clock.
And we'll post them now, just so people will know, even though the warrant will be available, we'll have it after the 10th. We'll put on the, the.
One other question regards to the town report, usually there's a request sent out for the reports from the different departments.
That went out about, that went out four weeks ago, I think.
Why didn't you get one?
Oh, you didn't get one?
Well, I, well, I don't know, maybe, did it go to Larry?
Well, I don't know who she sent it to, but Cheryl was, I told her to get this set up, in fact, she's supposed to be pushing it again today.
I sent an email to Larry, told him we needed to have one from the small bit. And I'm not, I didn't.
I'll check, I'll check with Cheryl, make sure she's got the right names, but she went through, I'll check.
Well, she probably, she probably did, Cheryl sent it, yeah.
Due date is tomorrow.
Well, we pushed.
Her due date is tomorrow.
We pushed, yes, I told her to put it up early, but due dates are due dates. We want them to be in, but you're not going to say no if they come in later.
Well, if we, the thing is, if we didn't get a notice, well, we probably did, you know, we just want to follow up and make sure that we get on the board and so.
So that takes care of sending the warrant review and the public hearing. Anything else, Danny? Who won?
Prowd him a little.
Okay.
Okay, so we did the, one other thing is, there were some questions about the language in one or two of the articles. At the first meeting, when we discussed the warrant and there was some changes made with the Belgrade Public Library, the request to put a second on the warrant argument. I had requested some of the language to be put forward to be, some of the writing. The language you got is what I came up with, because I didn't get any input, I did get some input today, and I'll provide that at the next meeting. That kind of more specifically defines what that request would be, so you'll, you'll hear about that.
I, I guess, I know this isn't the time to have that discussion.
No.
But that, 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 we have to as a board make that a, we have to change town policy in order for that to be illegal out of there.
Well.
We need, that, that's gonna have to be discussed because.
Yeah, we can discuss that, whatever you wanna discuss, I'm just, I'm just saying that as far as language goes, if people have language, I'd like to have it, but I did get some recommendations today and yesterday, so. I think. That's it. Dam repairs, I think I've pretty much updated you on that and now we're going forward with the permit process, Al Hodges is doing the committee on that. And that's it. That's it, other than the.
We've gotta go on executive session.
Yeah. Thank you, folks, yeah, go ahead, Howard.
Can I just make a request that the, if the article about the librarian position is gonna be in it, the wording could be specific as what it's for?
If you wanna provide some wording.
Well, the way it was written, the way I read it, it could be twenty thousand dollars for new computers for the library. I mean, it needs to be specific as to what it's for.
I specifically asked for input on that at the first joint meeting, the 7th meeting, to get wording, like I said, I came up with a word release on my understanding of the articles. I'm willing to take any wording, it's not, obviously, it's not, so.
Thank you, folks, appreciate you coming. Always a pleasure. For us, I don't know about you guys, but for us.